To our Pocatello City Council meeting this evening. We will start with our roll call and pledge of allegiance, followed by an invocation by Reverend Mike Cruthers representing First Presbyterian Church.
Mark Cruthers.
Well, Mark Cruthers, excuse me.
Cheatham.
Here.
Lurick.
Here.
Mangum.
Here.
Mansfield.
Here.
Marsham.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Vlad.
Will stand for a pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please join me in prayer. God of all creation, in this month when we make special time to be thankful, we offer you our thanks today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for the great privilege and deep responsibility of living in this city, this state, and this nation. Thank you for life itself, for the blessing of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for the freedom we each have to worship as we feel called. Thank you for loving us from your boundless and gracious nature. Today we pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. We ask that you graciously grant them wisdom to govern our city in the midst of difficult times nationally and globally, a sense for the welfare and true needs of our people, a desire to see justice, fairness, and equality, understanding of what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there may be differences of opinion, personal peace in their lives, and a sense of joy and purpose in their tasks. We pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give them insight as to what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Pocatello. Trusting in your holy presence, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Cruthers. I love your bow tie. Council will move to Agenda Item Number Three, the Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and one vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the clarification in regular city council meetings of October 19th, 2023. B, Material Claims. Council may wish to approve the material claims for the period of October 16th to 31st, 2023. C is Childcare Advisory Committee Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Leah Holow to serve as a member of the Childcare Advisory Committee, replacing Corey Lewis, whose term is expiring. Leah's term will begin November 7th, 2023, and expire November 7th, 2027. D is Historic Preservation Commission Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of James Young to continue serving as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. James's term will begin November 2023 and expire November 2026. E, Human Relations Advisory Committee Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Kafaoata Alau. Okay. To serve as a member of the human, I apologize to that person for that. To serve as a member of the Human Relations Advisory Committee, replacing Rainbow Maldonado, who resigned. Kafauatu's term will begin November 3rd, 2023, and expire September 17th, 2025. F is Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Billy Satterfield to continue serving as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, representing the Golf Advisory Committee. Billy's term will begin November 17th, 2023, and expire November 17th, 2025. G is Council Decision on a Final Plaid Approval for Jasmine Place First Edition Subdivision. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving a request to subdivide approximately 6.56 acres of land, generally located east of the intersection of Jasmine Street and Dolleston Drive into 13 lots, subject to conditions.
Council President Cheatham.
Councilwoman.
I was going to say Mr. Mayor.
Lurick.
Thank you. I move to approve the Consent Agenda Items A through G as outlined.
Second. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mangum. Connie, would you please call a roll?
Lurick.
Yes.
Mangum.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Marsham.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes. Agenda Item Number Four, Proclamations. We have none this evening. And our calendar review, which is Agenda Item Number Five, we have council meetings coming up on November 9th at 9:00 a.m. will be a city council work session. November 16th at 5:30 a.m., a clarification meeting, then at 6 o'clock, the regular council meeting. On November 17th at 8:30 a.m., there'll be a special city council goal-setting meeting. Other events. Early voting continues through tomorrow, November 3rd, at the Bannock County Elections Office at 141 North Sixth Avenue. Voting hours are 8:30 a.m. through 4:30 p.m. Election Day is next Tuesday, November 7th, so please get out and vote. On November 4th, which is this Saturday, at 11:00 a.m., the Veterans Day Parade will occur in historic downtown Pocatello, which will include a military flyover by an A-10 Warthog. On November 10th, we'll be observing Veterans Day. City offices will be closed for the holiday. Sanitation department collection trucks will remain on their regular schedule. On November 15th, the City Creek Recreation Area gates will be closed to motorized access until roughly May 15th of 2024. November 15th through 18th is the Festival of Trees at the Stevens Performing Arts Center. And a reminder, the annual leaf collection continues through November 25. Leaves must be placed in large paper compostable bags, not boxes or plastic bags. Place your compostable leaf bags curbside by 7:00 a.m. on the regular collection day to be taken to the Bannock County Landfill Compost Site. Agenda Item Number Six is a public hearing for Title 17 zoning regulations. This time's been set aside for the council to hear comments from the public regarding amendments to Title 17 zoning regulations. This is a legislative public hearing, and I declare the public hearing open. I love that. Jim, can we hear from you?
Go into his head.
Good evening, Council President Cheatham and other members of the council. Jim Anglesey, Long Range Planner for the city of Pocatello. The request before you tonight is to seek the council's approval for proposed changes to Title 17 zoning regulations. On October 11th, 2023, a public hearing was held in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission where they recommended approval of the proposed changes for you to consider tonight. The proposed amendments were also reviewed by the council on September 14th at a work And you have in your packet a summary of the proposed amendments. For the benefit of the public, those that are here and those that are watching, I'll review those. But before I do, I will address some rumors or misinformation that's been circulating throughout the community that these changes would affect short-term rentals or Airbnbs. And I want to state for the record that they will not. Nothing in these changes will prohibit or limit what you can do with short-term rentals. It still holds true that any legal dwelling unit in the city can be rented out as a short-term So for the proposed changes, starting in 1701-150 in the definition section, we're proposing to amend the disturbed area definition to clarify what is considered natural and disturbed slopes. Add definition for front building facade to clarify standards for building orientation, drive-throughs, and parking locations. Add definition for front yard area to clarify landscaping requirements. Add definition for premature alterations to clarify review from item for the Historic Preservation Commission. Add definition for principal entrance to clarify building orientation. Add definition for short-term rental to clarify use. Amend shelter housing, this is in 1701-160, Use Classifications. Amend shelter housing to include post-incarceration and halfway houses for individuals not under judicial detention. And amend classification for detention facilities. In 1701-170 Administrative Provisions. Amend language that determines what qualifies as a legal nonconforming lot. Amend language to include signage that qualifies as legal nonconforming structures. Remove the variance process as a means to expand the legal nonconforming structure and replace with the conditional use permit process. Add standards for expanding, rebuilding, and repairing legal nonconforming structures. Remove variance application review criteria for legal nonconforming structures. Add language to clarify standards for repair and reconstruction of structures housing illegal nonconforming use. Remove criteria for nonconforming use expansion or change to meet the general criteria of a conditional use permit. Remove proportionate compliance and replace with required improvements. And add withholdings to address violations. In 1702-120 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Amend language to reference the most recently adopted comprehensive plan. In 1702-130 Conditional Use Permits. Amend language to allow for two years to establish use instead of one year. Amend language to allow for a one-year extension instead of six months. And remove 30-day requirement to request a variance extension or a conditional use permit extension. In 1702-160 Variances. Amend language to allow for two years to establish the requested variance instead of one. Amend language to allow for a one-year extension instead of six months. And remove a 30-day requirement to request a variance extension. 1702-300 Decision-Making Procedures and Public Hearings. Add provisions in the hearing matrix and notification procedures to reflect proposed certificate of appropriateness process, as we'll discuss below. 1702-400 Appeals. Amend language to include the Historic Preservation Commission. 1703-500 Use Table. Amend table to reflect the proper use of restricted uses and permitted uses. Allow colleges to be permitted outright in commercial zones and office park zones. Allow emergency services to be permitted outright in all zones. Allow religious institutions to be permitted outright in all commercial zones. Allow schools to be permitted outright in all commercial zones. Clarify community recreation use approval process in residential zones. Move bed and breakfast from housing types to commercial. Add short-term rental under housing types. And clarify bed and breakfast facilities for commercial zones. In 1703-600 Dimensional Standards Table. Remove redundant setback requirements. 1704-210 Historic Preservation Overlay. Add table outlining what items require certificate of appropriateness, as well as commission review, staff review, or requires no certificate of appropriateness. Amend application process to reflect proposed certificate of appropriateness process. Remove section outlining standards for review and reference the historic district design standards for review standards. Remove demolition procedures to reflect proposed certificate of appropriateness process. Add language requiring historic buildings to meet the provisions of the International Existing Building Code relating to the repair, alteration, relocation, and change of occupancy. In 1704-220 Original Town Site Overlay. Amend setback requirements for nonresidential uses to include a minimum of zero feet and a maximum of 10. In addition to parking areas require traffic circulation and drive-throughs to not be located between front building facade and the front lot line. Add language codifying street light standards as identified in the downtown development plan. 1705-100 Slope Development Standards. Amend slope analysis to allow for previously disturbed slopes to be excluded from disturbance calculations. 1705-250 Street Frontage and Setback Area Landscaping. Amend landscape, amend minimum landscaping requirements to be broken down into different residential development types. And amend language to ensure its consistency. 1705-610 Residential Development Standards. Add requirement for town home development landscaping. Amend off-street parking requirements for properties with alley access outside of the OTO. And amend section formatting. And finally, 1706-400 Home Occupations. Allow for retail sales and home occupations that meet all other standards. Notification for this public hearing has met all local and state requirements, and we have received no public comment or any correspondence for this item. This ends my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions that the council may have.
Madam Clerk, has there been any correspondence in your office?
No correspondence.
Councilwoman Lurick.
I do have a question on 1703-500. So your comment at the beginning about Airbnbs and short-term rentals, but I'd just like to clarify, I think it's the last three points there. So bed and breakfast is moving from housing types to commercial, and then we're adding short-term rental under housing types, and then bed and breakfast is for commercial zones. So where do Airbnbs fall? Are they considered short-term rentals and not bed and breakfasts?
Yeah, they would be considered short-term rentals. Airbnbs can also be a long-term rental situation.
Right.
Bed and breakfasts are more commercial operations.
Okay.
That require commercial standards to be met.
Like a hotel type, but small.
Yep, smaller, where they serve breakfast. And so that's what differentiates it from, you know, from a hotel motel and bed and breakfast is that you're, one, you're getting breakfast, but also there's, within building code, you have this, you know, little nest. This is a five-bedroom type of, you know, making reservations type of deal versus like an Airbnb. They're typically short-term rentals or even a long-term rental situation.
I just wanted to clarify because there has been confusion in the community and B&amp;B, that's what it originally meant. So I can see where some of that confusion is coming from. But if that doesn't affect people that are doing those, then I'm good with that. Thanks.
Councilwoman Nichols.
Follow-up on Linda's comment here. So would a bed and breakfast still be allowed in a residential neighborhood, say in a historic home or a district?
Yeah, so in the table, in our residential zones, it is and continues to be proposed as conditionally permitted.
Okay.
So through a conditional use permit approval, they could have a bed and breakfast in a residential zone. And then I believe that that's the same in our RCP zone as well. A RCP zone is permitted outright, and then commercial zoning, it falls under commercial lodging.
Okay. All right, got it. Thank you.
Any other questions, council? I have one. Are definitions of these various kinds of housing included in the rest of the ordinance?
Correct.
So those are outlined, so there's no confusion?
Correct, yeah.
All right. Any other questions, council? All right, let's see. So we, yes. I'd like to ask for testimony by those supporting the application. Anyone? Testimony by those uncommitted to the application. Testimony for those opposed to the application. Any further comments, Jim? Any rebuttal? To nothing? All right. I declare the public hearing closed. Council, this item is before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Council President.
Councilwoman Mansfield.
I would propose, I would move that we recommend to staff a preparation of an ordinance to amend Title 17 and zoning regulations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Connie, would you please call a roll?
Mansfield.
Yes.
Mangum.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Marsham.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes. Item number seven on our agenda tonight is a short-plat application for Chatterton Acres. Council may wish to approve a short-plat application submitted by Derek Chatterton to subdivide 2.09 acres, more or less, into three residential lots. The proposed subdivision is located at 1712 and 1734 Cottage Avenue. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards of Pocatello Municipal Code, assuming compliance with the conditions listed in the staff report.
Council President.
Councilwoman Mansfield.
I would move for approval of the short-plat application, Chatterton Acres, as outlined in Agenda Item Seven, assuming compliance with all conditions listed in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Mangum. Connie, would you please call a roll?
Mansfield.
Yes.
Mangum.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Marsham.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes. Agenda Item Number Eight, Employee Personnel Policy Handbook Adoption. Council may wish to approve a new version of the Personnel Policy Handbook that incorporates policies from Information Technologies, the Mayor Council Department, Fleet Procurement, and Human Resources. The policies were presented during the July, August, and October 2023 work sessions.
Council President.
Councilman Mangum.
I would like to first commend HR and all the department heads for the work that they did on getting this up to date and maintaining the care for our staff and for human resources throughout the city employees. And on that, I would like to move that we approve Agenda Item Eight.
Second.
We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Lurick. Connie, would you please call a roll?
Before we vote, can I just add to Corey's comments? I also commend staff, but one of the things that I'm especially pleased with is that these are policies designed to be employee-friendly, to help situations with employees, to really sort of treat them fairly, and I'm pleased with that. I like that it's changes that are in favor or in support of our employees. Thank you. Sorry, I'm not very articulate tonight.
Any further comments by council? Connie, would you please call the roll?
Mangum.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Marsham.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes. Agenda Item Nine is a piggyback of Sourcewell Contract for a 150-motor grade lease through Street Operations. Council may wish to accept the recommendation of staff and approve the piggyback contract of Sourcewell Contract 032119 CAT with Caterpillar Incorporated for the lease of one new Caterpillar 150 AWD motor grader, consisting of five annual payments of $38,256.26, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. Purchase costs have been budgeted in the Street Operations Department fiscal year 2024 budget.
Council President.
Councilwoman Nichols.
Yes, I move to approve Agenda Item Number Nine as listed. Second.
Who said that?
Josh.
Okay. We've got a motion by Nichols and a second by Mansfield. Connie, would you please call the roll?
Nichols.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Mangum.
Yes.
Marsham.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes. Agenda Item Number Ten is an ordinance amending Pocatello Municipal Code Title VIII, Chapter VIII, 14110, penalties to modify criminal penalties for nuisance violations. Council, how would you like to have the ordinance read?
Council President Cheatham.
Yes, Councilwoman Mansfield.
I move the ordinance Agenda Item 10A be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Mangum. Connie, would you please call the roll?
Mansfield.
Yes.
Mangum.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Marsham.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes. Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes. An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending Title VIII Health and Safety of the Revised and Piled Ordinances of the city of Pocatello, more particularly by amending Chapter 8.14.110, Penalties to Modify Criminal Penalties for Violations, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that this will be the final reading of the ordinance, shall the ordinance pass.
Lurick.
Yes.
Mangum.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Marsham.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes. Agenda Item Number Ten is Items from the Audience.
Item 11.
What did I say? 10? I'm sorry. Agenda Item 11, Items from the Audience. This time's been set aside to hear items from the audience not listed on the agenda. Items which appeared somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. Total time is 15 minutes, three minutes per speaker, and we have three persons who have signed in. We'll start with Lydia Noble.
Lydia Noble, Pocatello, Idaho. Just very briefly, thank you again for returning public comment so that we can make some comments. Tonight's comment from me will be just that we had asked several questions during the meeting two weeks ago, and we have not received any responses. So just so council understands, we'll put those questions in writing to hopefully aid in getting them answered and probably be submitting that soon for your review. Thank you.
Thank you, Lydia. Up next, Karen McGee.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Because I talk really fast. Hi, everyone. My name is Karen McGee, concerned citizen and former city council member and council chairperson, many moons ago, not 1889, but a few years ago. First, I'd like to thank you for reopening public comment period, which was standard practice when I was on the city council. Actually, it was one of my favorites. I liked meeting the citizens, and I liked to hear what they were saying. But tonight, I'm going to tell you a story. One July morning this summer, my husband and I and our neighbors on the Johnny Creek area were awakened by a monster machine, which was destroying hundreds of ancient juniper trees on our properties. To make a very, a long story short, it was a private developer installing a water line to his private development by attempting to tap into the Johnny Creek tank and exploit the old Mink Creek water line easement, which was established in the early 1900s to bring non-potable water to the steam engines of the now-defunct Oregon Short Line Railroad. As we had received no prior notification, and the project involved our land, including a very delicate watershed with multiple springs and a pond, as everyone knows, and we were obviously concerned, one of our neighbors who was notified said that she was told it was a city project. A copy of the letter is in my handout. We didn't receive one. Very few people received them, not by mail, but somebody knocking on the door. It is on the letterhead of the developer, not the city of Pocatello. It implies that this is a city project for upgrading and improvements. We attempted to get answers from the city council, but no one claimed to know anything about it, not the Public Works Department, not the Water Department, not the Environmental Equality Department, and not the city attorneys. Mary Quell, who is referenced as the contact in the letter, was on vacation and not available. The transmission line project is not in the Water Department budget, which is readily available online. We cannot find any minutes of a city council or planning a development meeting which approved it. There was no construction permits for the project posted online or anywhere. I called the mayor's office and was told that I could get an appointment in four weeks. I called a city council person who said he could not talk to me because we had an attorney involved. In fact, the attorney, two attorneys, our neighbors, our friends, who informally looked into this pro bono, and we are not under any contract or retainer. Thankfully, because of our efforts for the past two months, the project has been halted, at least temporarily. We called the EPA, the Department of Environmental Equality, and the Federal Bureau of Land Management, and they confirmed what we suspected. and they confirmed what we suspected, that a special permit from the Army Corps of Engineers would have to be achieved to go through any watershed. A representative of the BLM discovered that the easement on their land, which they also dug on, was abandoned in 1948 when the property was acquired for the Shoshone-Bannock tribes.
Karen, I'm sorry, but your three minutes are up.
Okay. I just have a lot of questions, how this happened, and the bullying of the neighbors.
Thank you. Next up, we have Brandon Pfeifer.
You told me we had 10 minutes. You told me you had 10 minutes. Yes, so did Councilwoman Maggie.
Brandon Pfeifer, I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, ladies and gentlemen, with that, our meeting is adjourned.